Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call us to order. This is the City Council's special meeting for Tuesday, May 14th, 2019. We are going to start off with public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council three-minute limit per person, or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted by email by 5:00 PM at the end of business day to the city clerk, Melanie Anderson, at manderson@smamish.us. Please be aware that council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. Do we have a sign-up sheet? Nope. Is there anyone that would like to make pugboat comments? Mary?
Hello, my name is Mary Victor, and I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Smamish. I have comments related to this at Smamish Municipal Code 24, going to 24A. I had emailed in my comments, but I wanted to go through some things with you. I did attend also the Planning Commission meetings that were on the topic. There were three of them. The first one is that the SMC 24A is not just for comp plan amendments, it's also for development regulation amendments. And I hadn't understood that until I asked about it. And I guess my question is, can the city amend development regulations without needing themselves to do a docket annually? And if they can't, then maybe it needs to be part of the exemption, which is listed a little bit lower on the page. You've also listed that area-wide maps and area-wide rezones can only be done during the periodic update. And the concern I have for that is I think they're talking about the zoning map, but there are maps in the comp plan and also in development code that may include the whole city, and we shouldn't have to wait till once every eight years to get those maps updated. I understand part of it will be adopted by resolution and ordinances, and I just wanted to confirm that. It sounds like to get on the docket, it's by resolution, and then to get the actual changes implemented, it's by ordinances. If that's not the case, then change your wording, and I also think your diagrams don't match the wording. Also, it says that you're restricted from resubmitting the same application for three years, but because you submit it in August, and then they review it and you get rejected, it's actually four years, which I think is too long. So I made the suggestion, they said if I wrote it down at Planning Commission, it could be considered by council. If you change that to two years instead of three years, it will actually function, and it will take three years for somebody to submit it. One of the concerns I have, though, is if you have a small change or a small text amendment, you really should be able to submit that every year if it just can't get put in. And if somebody submits it or moves away, it would be nice if it could be resubmitted. So I wonder if you would look at that a little bit. It also says, so every time it says that there can be a comp plan amendment, I think it should say that it's Development Regulations Amendment, too, because it's only some places. And I think that should be perfectly clear, that it's for code, not just for comp plan. And then in there, you have that if somebody gets through step one and step two, there's a 90-day window that if they exceed, then it just goes null and void on their contingent. I suggest adding a sentence that the 90-day timeframe may be considered for extension if the delays were not due to the applicant or factors that were within their control. You might also change the 90 days to not include holidays, because what happens if it starts right before Christmas, and they can't get any work done? Just as suggestions. Also, if somebody goes through a whole process and they miss it by a day, and you're not letting them apply for three or four more years, that just seems unfair. So I think looking at those two things is important. And then I just had a couple of small typos and fixes, and I don't ever want to spend time at council meetings or Planning Commission meetings to talk about those, so I hope that you would always allow staff to just look at those, and if they make sense, include them in. So anyway, those are my updates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening? Paul?
Good evening, City Council. My name, Paul Stickney, 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. I'd like to compliment the city and the staff and the Planning Commission on this, on these comp plan updates, starting from a couple years ago, where there were a lot of ideas, all tossed around. It got stalled for a bit. And then going forward, there was a lot of public input, a lot of real good comments, and this result in front of you is really good. I've got a couple ideas, but I'm not going to mention them tonight. I want to see what's talked about, and I'll send in a, you know, public comment. I only have one thing on it now, but I'm going to wait and see. And also, look for a concurrency email from me to follow up on the open hearing that was opened last week. And I think that hearing goes through the 23rd, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah. I've got some interesting, you know, perspectives, a tad counterintuitive, but I think will be really helpful and advantageous. So I'm going to send that email in the next couple of days, and it may sort of shake things up a bit, but in my mind, in very positive, holistic, long-term, advantageous ways. So I'll be sending that. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, our next order of business is a proclamation for Smamish National Police Week. And council, if you'll open that up in your iPad, I'm going to have us go kind of up and down the dais to read the pieces of it. I'll start with that first paragraph, and then Jason, if you wouldn't pick up with that first "whereas." So this is proclamation for National Police Week 2019. To recognize National Police Week 2019, and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy.
Whereas, there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Smamish Police Department and the King County Sheriff's Office. And?
Whereas, there were 158 law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty in 2018, and 37 officers killed so far in 2019.
Whereas, since the first recorded police death in 1786, there have been over 21,000 law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty. And?
Whereas, there are 21,910 names engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC.
Whereas, 292 of those names engraved are from Washington State.
Whereas, the service and sacrifice of all the officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 31st Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2019, during National Police Week, which takes place this year, May 12th through May 18th. And?
Whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff.
Therefore, be it resolved, we, the City Council of the City of Smamish, do hereby proclaim May 12th through 18th, 2019, as Police Week in the City of Smamish, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
That is our proclamation. And we have our esteemed Chief Michelle Button here, and a phone ringing this evening to accept our proclamation. And Chief, we are passing a proclamation down here that we're all signing, that we will present to you here. We apologize, we have two council members that are in the cloud.
I think we're on now, Kristy.
They can sign that for you a little bit later. But... Thank you for being here, Chief. Okay. You guys want to sign it, and then we can present it? And Melanie, were you going to use your phone capturing skills for Sharon, or not? I want to make sure you don't get in trouble. Chief, do you mind coming up for a quick photo op? Council, if we can, maybe I'll come up here.
Will the cloud numbers be photoshopped in?
Tom, I don't know how to break this to you. I think "break" is the operative word. Okay. Did you guys accidentally switch chairs there?
Chris got lost.
Okay, so our next presentation is a recognition for the CERT certification program. And so, who do we have presenting this evening? Okay. So if you guys are up at the podium, just make sure the microphone is on, so we can hear you. It should be.
Kristy, do you have what Andrews sent you?
I can look it up. Oh, you do? Okay, perfect. And for those who are unfamiliar with CERT, that is the Community Emergency Response Team, and they're a group of volunteers here in Smamish. Hopefully, you guys will explain a little bit about what you do, but in an emergency, they are critical for our residents. Okay. Do you want me to go ahead and read Andrews?
Or that, or we can.
Okay, either way.
Okay, the City of Smamish Community Emergency Response Team Program educates our residents about disaster preparedness for the hazards that may impact our community, and trains them in basic disaster response skills such as fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, and disaster medical operations. Basic CERT graduates are trained to respond safely, responsibly, and effectively to emergency and disaster situations, strengthening the community resiliency of Smamish at a grassroots level. Since 2003, the Smamish Citizen Corps Council, in partnership with the City of Smamish, has trained over 800 residents in CERT. Having recently completed the 21-hour Basic CERT class, the individuals here tonight represent the latest cohort of CERT graduates.
And Norm Barton-Bottenberg, and Joyce Bartonberg.
So if you want to just stand up here, and we'll get a picture?
Thank you. Candy Hudson, and Dane Hudson. Frank Walkowski. Mitch Roberts. George Seal.
Don't be afraid to wrap around the dais here, too. It's fine.
Eric Johnson. Alicia.
Alicia, how do you pronounce your last name? Thank you.
They attended nine weeks of classes doing fire suppression, learning how to use a fire extinguisher. They learned how to triage patients, basic medical. They also learned how to do cribbing, which is moving a wall to drag a person from underneath a wall, or something that's falling on someone. They also did light search and rescue. And they did a drill with the City of Issaquah, with their class, that they practiced all the skills that they learned in those eight weeks. They demonstrated those in the drill on a Saturday. How was the weather on that?
It wasn't bad.
Nice weather this. It wasn't raining. So, and they completed that program, so.
That is really great. I, you know, I think I speak on behalf of our council, and certainly our residents, in thanking you for taking the time to dedicate towards the training that you have now undergone on behalf of all residents here. It really is impressive, and we thank you for your time, your passion, and your energy into Smamish emergency and disaster preparedness. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Melanie, you want to put your phone to use again?
Can we get a picture?
Yes, absolutely.
There is one last presentation we'd like to actually make, and that is to Kristy and to Karen for being such great supporters of the Smamish Citizen Corps. You've shown up at, let's see, barbecues, classes, drills, and we really appreciate your support. So to show you our gratitude, we have challenge coins for each of you from the Smamish Citizen Corps.
Thank you. Okay, so our next item is a discussion on indexing surface water system development charge. Mr. City Manager?
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to our Acting Public Works Director, Cheryl.
Good.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Acting City Manager, Cheryl Paston, again, Acting Public Works Director. This is actually, I'm not sure if this is really a discussion. It's going to be, hopefully, the shortest presentation I'll ever make in my last five years here. Anyways, as you recall, we were here last week to talk about the traffic impact fee study. One of the, one of the asks of council was to index our traffic and our parks fees. We were remiss, and we intended to ask also if we could index the surface water development charge. And this would be to the E&amp;R Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index for Seattle. It's the same index we would be using for the transportation projects and for the parks' capital projects. And if you recall, the SDC charge is not a connection fee charge. It's a, it's a way for the city to recoup investments that were already made in the stormwater system and on future costs on the capital side. So again, we're just going to wrap it in, administratively index the SDC. So what I'm asking for council is just a nod of the head, so the next time that we come to you with the code updates, you'll see some language in the code that allows us to administratively do this.
Yep, be that not, all right. Thank you. Might have been the shortest topic ever. I love it. Thank you. Okay. So our next discussion item is to receive the recommendations of the Planning Commission on a new SMC Title 24A, the Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations Amendment Procedure.
All right. Good evening, City Council. Jeff Thomas with Community Development, and our newly-minted Senior Management Analyst, Miriam Leitner, joins me this evening for this presentation and handoff of the Planning Commission's recommendations. While Miriam's getting set up, I'll just make a few introductory comments. We did have a change to your packet materials that I believe was published sometime yesterday afternoon, and we're going to get into that at the end of our presentation. What we'd like to do first is walk you through a short series of slides that will give a little bit higher-level overview as to what is the current Title 24, what is the new Title 24A, why are we doing this, how did it all come about, the timeline, and so forth. And then we'll talk about the packet materials for a few minutes at the end of our presentation. I think we've got maybe about 10 or 12 slides for you, so it should be a fairly short presentation. And we can certainly take your questions at the end of that, once we get through the discussion about the packet materials. With that, I think we'll just get right into it. So, a little bit of background for you. This slide up here is a little bit predictive of the state level, the Growth Management Act, the city's comprehensive plan, and then comprehensive plan amendments. So, as you're all aware, we're planning under the Growth Management Act, and what it provides for are two types of amendment cycles for our comprehensive plan. One is a periodic update, which by state law, right now, we're on an eight-year cycle with that. So our last periodic update for the comprehensive plan was 2015. Our next one is due in 2023. Seems like a long way away, but it's not. And then there's these annual updates. So we are required to provide a process for doing annual updates to our comprehensive plan, and, as Mary actually mentioned during her public testimony, for development code amendments as well. So what happens is, that's what's spelled out in growth management and state law, but that provides the framework, but we get to provide the process for that. So that's where this municipal code Title 24 comes in. Think of it as the cookbook. It's a procedural document, for the most part, that tells us how we're going to go about doing those things. So it doesn't actually make changes to the comp plan, it's the process for making changes to the comp plan. A little bit of project history here, before I turn it over to Miriam for the next few slides. So 1999 incorporation, of course. That was the original adoption of Title 24. And then when the first Smamish comp plan was adopted by council in 2003, there was an update to Title 24 at that time. The funny thing about that is, at that point in time, Title 24, I think, was intended to be, or the comp plan, excuse me, was being called the interim comprehensive plan. So we still have code today that references from 2003, our interim comprehensive plan, just to show you how dated it is, right? That we're using this 2003 language. So what happened, there should be another, another little note on that timeline. 2014, Jeff arrives in Smamish. So what happened when Jeff arrived in Smamish in 2014 is, we were, we were probably a little bit more than, we were maybe about 60% to 65% of the way through the Planning Commission review of the periodic update for the comp plan. So we go through 14, we get into 2015, and then the council at that time, I don't believe any of you were on council, Ramiro was, in the sky tonight, but Ramiro and his colleagues at the time received that periodic update from the Planning Commission in March of 2015, and then in October, they took action and adopted the actual, the update itself, right? So we didn't, for 2014 and 2015, while we were engaged in that periodic update, we did not offer an annual docketing process for comp plan amendments. We had this much bigger monster to deal with, which was the periodic update. So what we did in 2016 was, we got back to offering that annual update process. 2016, we had, I don't remember the numbers exactly off the top of my head, but we had several site-specific land use map amendment requests for that docketing year. And I think it's fair to say, the staff, the Planning Commission, and even the council, that was a tough year. We really struggled with trying to, trying to follow our code and have a rational process for getting to the end of that docketing cycle. I don't believe any of those were actually docketed, the site-specific ones. There were a couple text amendments and a couple plan update things that were moved forward. But the point to that is, what we did after that docketing cycle in 2016 was, we instituted some administrative measures through yours truly, the planning director, to try and smooth out our process for 2017 a little bit, recognizing we could have, we were going to be in for much of the same type of subject matter coming back to us. So we did that. 2017 went better. We also, actually, before we got to 2017, in addition to that, we started working on the original update that we wanted to do to Title 24, and we actually took that through Planning Commission in early 17. And the Planning Commission made a recommendation, but then it was, the timing of it was starting to lead right into the docketing cycle again. So it was bad timing. So we held it back from bringing it forward to City Council. We went ahead with docketing for 2017, went a little bit better, and then last year, it went better again. But we've been using kind of these administrative measures that we instituted at the department director level to try and navigate our way through this process the last couple of years. So, after getting through the 2018 docket, which you're all familiar with, we brought our work from 2017 back to the Planning Commission earlier this year, and we had, what I believe was, was some really good work by the Planning Commission to reformulate their recommendation from 2017 into an even better product for you, for your consideration now legislatively here in May of 2019. So that's the timeline. The one thing on this that we're going to, obviously, calling it Title 24A implies a complete rewrite, repeal and rewrite of the existing Title 24. That is true, except for one thing. We've got a small section in the existing Title 24 related to public works basin planning. That's going to remain where it is for the time being, and then Public Works at some point will go back and pick that up and move it to Title 13, where it probably should be, so. So with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Miriam for the next few slides. She's going to actually talk a little bit about the nuts and bolts of what's in the Title 24A proposal, and then we'll wrap it up and talk about the exhibit senior packet.
Okay, so essentially, our goal with Title 24A is to tidy up our code. We want to remove all the language that's no longer relevant, and then create an organized, user-friendly streamlined version. Title 24A is designed to be really easy to follow and guide the public through what they need to do to amend the comprehensive plan and our development regulations. Additionally, the processes in there will assist staff, the Planning Commission, and City Council in both administering the amendment process and evaluating docket requests and amendment proposals. And then finally, the chapter on noticing in public participation will give staff really clear direction as they develop outreach strategies for the periodic update and for annual reviews. So now that you all have the background information, we thought it'd be helpful to walk through the three major processes included in Title 24A, so that you can see how things have changed. So we're going to start with the annual docket procedures, which I know you're all very familiar with already. And there aren't really major changes to this one. And there aren't really major changes to this one. We're going to be adjusting the application process to create a more simplified form that would be filled out for docket requests and then adding a more detailed application form for proposals that make it onto the docket. And we're going to talk more about that detailed application form later. We're also going to be posting a summary of each docket request on the website and provide opportunity for online comment so that public can provide comment on each request. In this way, staff and Planning Commission can consider the comments when making the recommendations and city council can do so when making their decision. And then finally, we're going to be following the revised public noticing procedures, which includes noticing on the city website and newspaper, which we currently do, but adding social media and doing all of these things 14 days before the hearing. Any questions on this one before I continue? Okay, so, once the docket's been set, the text amendment process would begin. And the major change here is that it includes development regulation text amendments as well as text amendments to the comprehensive plan. And as I mentioned earlier, we're adding a step here. So, we'll be creating an application form that's going to be required within 30 days of when the resolution setting the docket has been approved. And this is where we'd collect the information that's required by our comprehensive plan, asking applicants to address the decision criteria in Title 24A, and then collecting additional information to do a more thorough review. And then, just like with the annual docket procedures, we'll be following the revised public hearing noticing. Any questions on this one? So, just like the text amendment process, the site-specific land use map amendment process begins after the docket's been set and includes a more detailed application form to be submitted within 30 days of the resolution being approved. For site-specific land use map amendments, this application form is where we'd collect the SEPA checklist and any other information about the property. And again, we'll be following the public hearing noticing. The major change with this process is that we're separating out the future land use map change from the current zoning map change. And we are doing this to create a more straightforward process for applicants and for staff as well. So, what this means is that if council decides to approve a site-specific land use map amendment, the ordinance would be contingent on subsequent approval of the zone reclassification, which is a Type 3 land use action requiring hearing examiner approval. So, once the ordinance is passed, the applicant would have 90 days to submit their zone reclassification application to the city. Are there questions on this one? Okay.
That was quick. All right. So, in terms of next step, before we get to the exhibits, the council has a public hearing scheduled for Tuesday next week on this matter. I think the public commenters from the Planning Commission are actually in the audience tonight. So, you can see the size of the group that might be interested in this. Regarding, because it's really exciting stuff, right? Process and procedure. The exhibit, so what happened was when we sent the materials through our system to the clerk's office last week, exhibit one is the Planning Commission Recommendation Letter. The Planning Commission took the draft that was presented to them and made four changes that are delineated in that letter, so you can read what those are. We had exhibit two, which was then the clean version of the Planning Commission recommended language, six pages of code, to the council. And then, of course, exhibit three was the presentation that you just received here this evening. What we've done yesterday is we withdrew exhibit two and instead, we provided exhibit 2A and 2B. 2A is a strike-through version of Title 24A. And 2B is a code amendment matrix tracker, similar to what you just had, we're working with with the development regulations that you just finished with a week, I guess it was a week ago, actually. But, so, the reason why we did that is somewhere along the way, version control got out of control. And we had a polished version of the staff-proposed 24A for the Planning Commission. And where that went, I don't know. So, what happened was when I was going through these materials on the weekend, it started to dawn on me, wow, there's a lot of like periods and capitalizations that seem to be astray here. Miriam and I talked and we realized something had went wrong. So, on Monday, prior to the mayor and deputy mayor agenda meeting with the city manager, we started to work on a track change version to get all those little polishing things back into the version for your consideration. So, that's what exhibit 2A, the strike-through version, is. Exhibit 2B, then, is just obviously the matrix summarizing all of those changes. We don't believe there's anything in there substantive enough that would require that we'd have to go back and kind of duke this out with the Planning Commission again. But you guys can take a read through it over the next week. This is not going to change over the next week. So, we will, these 2A and 2B exhibits will be republished in your packet for next week for the public hearing. We can certainly have further discussion about those next week after the public hearing and go from there with it. So, with that, I'll conclude, again, by just reemphasizing, this is a procedural document. So, this doesn't actually make, you know, development standard changes or anything like that. This is just the process for how we do those. And I think it's a really good document. The Planning Commission work on this was really good. We had really good public comment at the Planning Commission. And this will make everyone's life, staff, the commission, the council, and perhaps most of all, the public, give them a recipe book for how to get from A to Z on this type of stuff, and it'll be really clear to everybody. The public hearing noticing, Miriam mentioned a few times. The council will recall, back in February, when we had the snowstorm, we had to cancel a public hearing for the development regulations and reschedule that for March. And it was more than a month later. We actually, I think we had a special meeting in March to have that public hearing, to get it done as quickly as possible with that 30-day noticing requirement. So, that's been changed in here, where our public hearings for development comp plan and regulation changes will be 14 days, which will allow us, the staff, more in the clerk's office, more flexibility in being able to get these things on your calendar and the Planning Commission's calendar. So, with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you. We're happy to take any questions at this time. Otherwise, again, we're going to just essentially republish these exhibits for your packet next week when you have the public hearing. Thank you.
So, open up to council for any questions that anyone might have. Councilmember Stewart?
Sorry, I have one on the noticing updates. I think in addition to social media, I think we have like a emailing list that people can sign up for. And for those who aren't social media savvy, it feels like we should include that as well. And I was not sure if we saw that on there, but I think that would be, you know. There are a lot of people that are not on social media, that are leaving social media. Depends on what social media platform you are. If you're doing Facebook, that's only for old people. At least, that's what I hear. So, is it, you know, so I just, I think that while I'm not, I think, you know, the more ways we notify people, the better. So, I don't know if that's something we could consider adding, since there is something that people sign up for, for updates, that feels like a really great way to reach out and notify people, especially if we're shortening the window of notification.
Sure.
So, I have a couple of questions. And I guess if you're following along on an iPad, this would be page 11 of 26. This is under Chapter 24A.15, Noticing and Public Participation. Letter A there says, "A General Mailing to Interested Parties." How are we defining interested parties? And how do we know they're interested? I don't know if that would, you know, dovetail into what Councilmember Stewart just said. We do have a mechanism on our website currently, although I think they may have been changing that, where you could, you know, opt in for certain topics. But I think they were trying to narrow it because there were so many, and they were doing it by hand rather than it being automated. But I was just kind of curious how we define who those interested parties are.
Yeah, so, that's a good question, actually. So, back in, back in the old days, right? The 2000s even. Some of this type of work would be, literally, we'd be extracting property addresses from King County Assessor's Office and doing citywide mailings of, you know, some sort of flyer, something like that. The city, when the city did some area-wide rezone work back during that period of time, we found old documents on RP drive where that was literally the case. All affected properties on the western slopes of the city were put into a mailing database and there was, there were letters sent out, right? So, that could mean, that could mean a variety of things. It stated generally here, generally what we would be doing for a comp plan update would be to put together a more specific public participation communications plan in advance of starting that effort that would take that and add some definition to it and frame it out.
Perfect. In that same list, and this is moving on to page 12, but this is letter E, it says notifying public or private groups. That, my question is, how are we going to keep track of this? If we're notifying public or private groups with known interest in a certain proposal, my curiosity is how we're keeping track of who those groups are? You know, if it's just in our head, but we change staff and make it lost, if there's, I'm just curious if there's a certain process behind that and how we will track that.
Yeah, so, similar to the answer I just gave for item A. Item, which one is it here? It's B? No.
A was the first one and E was the second.
Yeah. That would be the same thing. When we put together that public participation communication plan in advance of commencing the periodic update, we would identify those groups, if any. And then, so that would actually be part of the public record that who received notice, right? Whether it's groups, individuals, the what have you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Moran?
I actually had a question, but it's, and it's in that same category. But mine is on B, which is posting of signs of flyers or flyers. And is that at all public buildings? Is that, I mean, where?
So, again, good question. And it's, this section, let me, let me back up a little bit and talk about this section a little bit. It's a, it's a requirement of Growth Management that we put in a public, a broad public participation plan into these types of procedures for the periodic update. But for all of these things, we get to define them further at that point in time when we're getting ready to actually undertake the process and the work, right? So, part of that, part of that plan, that more specific plan, maybe to, not that we would do this here in Sammamish, but maybe to put flyers on every streetlight pole in the city in the public right of way, right? That could be part of the plan. We may make up, you know, a billboard of some sort and put it, you know, participate now, Sammamish Comp Plan 2023 type thing, so. So, we have the ability to put that plan together, bring it to council, to have that discussion with you as we ramp up for that effort a few years in advance of 2023, to get you to be aware of what the plan is and whether you have any, any desired adjustments to it.
I don't see any other questions up here unless, last call. Any questions?
Okay. So, we'll get, we'll get the packet materials for you next week. We'll have the public hearing and then we'll have a chance to talk about this further.
Right, thank you. I think we really simplified that here tonight, considering the amount of work that went into it by both staff and the Planning Commission. So, thank you all.
Great.
We'll touch it again on the 21st. I don't believe we have an executive session, correct? Okay. So, it is 7:14. Everyone write that down. We are concluded.